For the Foché Tech Academy, they've been together for three years and this is their showcase of all of their computer science work over the past three years. As their final project, they each took on an issue in the community and used technology to provide either awareness or a solution to the issue.
It's all part of the Hour of Code campaign, a worldwide effort to expand access to computer science and increasing participation by women and underrepresented students of color.
I learned different programming languages, I learned new life skills about marketing and about communication, and I've learned that it can be applied in everything that you do. So now I plan on attending college and majoring in computer science.
The students tackle real-world problems from entirely new perspectives.
For example, one of the issues we have here on campus is social responsibility. So one of the groups created Foché Rewards, and they're trying to gamify school to get people to help each other and look out for each other, so hopefully it becomes a normal course of action.
But with engaged teachers and industry mentors, students are discovering the skills they've learned aren't just for their future.
You can make a difference right now. As a matter of fact, we need you to make a difference right now. As a matter of fact, we need you to lead right now.
From Foché Tech Academy in South Los Angeles, this is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
The Hour of Code event has introduced more than 100 million students worldwide to computer science. While you never get table service like this, Greater L.A.'s African-American Chamber of Commerce kicked off its inaugural celebrity waiter and waitress luncheon. Stars from every walk of life donated their services for a good cause. Anna Marcos has the story.
These aren't just run-of-the-mill waiters and waitresses. There are some big VIPs here, all taking part in the first-ever celebrity waiter and waitress luncheon. The fundraiser is put on by the Greater L.A. African-American Chamber of Commerce Education Fund and Foundation, or GLAC. Waiter and councilmember Corinne Price gets a welcome that would be the envy of any Hollywood A-list star.
This is an opportunity to support GLAC and its education fund. We're supporting young people, encouraging their educational pursuits.
The celebrity waitstaffers run the gamut, from Microsoft and Tinseltown executives to government leaders, lawyers, and doctors. There is even an L.A. Police Commissioner in the bunch. And guess what? You have to tip.
My momma taught us that if you can't afford to tip, you can't afford to eat.
And not just one tip either. After all, how many waiters do you know will pose for pictures, dance for customers, make small talk, and yes, even do real waitstaff work, like serving and pouring? How about a plate and a hug? Now that's TLC. And the more tips you can collect for each job, the better. Because the cash doesn't go into these waiters' pockets, it goes into the pot to fund college educations for young African-American high school graduates.
There's a red jar, a red box, on your table. You don't have to hand your waiters any money or anything, you drop it right there in that box.
I might have to go back to my day job, yes, but I'm learning on the job.
Well, a little extra job experience can't hurt the resume. And with the money raised, you just might help a young person get started on a career. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
GLAC provides economic opportunities for underserved communities, and it has already raised close to a half a million dollars for inner-city students' education. While the L.A. Zoo welcomes its newest residents, a pair of Tasmanian devils who are there for show as well as conservation. Gil Reyes explains.
That is right, Yana. The arrival of these two Tasmanian devils, brothers by the way, is part of a larger effort to save the animals from extinction. Tasmanian devils, on the whole, suffering from a rare type of facial cancer.
They arrive at the L.A. Zoo with the nastiest of reputations, but the truth about Tasmanian devils is that their bark, or rather, their growl is worse than their bite.
[imitates devil growling] Contrary to belief, they are not the vicious creatures that people think they are.
You might have been expecting this, the snarling tough guy from Looney Tunes destroying everything in his path like a tornado. But Robin Parker, senior zoo animal keeper, says real Tasmanian devils are usually quite timid until provoked.
They can spin, but not quite like the cartoon character.
And why do they spin? What's that?
It's normally an aggressive behavior.
Though only the size of a small dog, Tasmanian devils are the largest marsupial carnivores in the world. They attack in groups, eat animals whole, and have terrifying, bone-chilling shrieks to go with those sharp teeth. The two brothers come to us from a wildlife sanctuary in Tasmania, Australia.
We hope people enjoy it. They are threatened and endangered in Australia, and we hope to be part of the solutions going forward in the future.
L.A. Zoo Director John Lewis says more than half of the population has been wiped out in recent years, mainly because of devil facial tumor disease, a parasitic cancer. The brothers, around three years old, are cancer-free. The long-term goal is to find the mates so they can help produce colonies of healthy offspring.
They don't eat humans whole, do they?
I hope not.
Rodents, chunk meat, and rabbits mostly. At the L.A. Zoo, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. Zoo is one of only four zoos in the nation that have taken in the creatures. While 13th District Councilman Mitchell Farrell celebrated two years in office with a recommitment to community empowerment, Rich Samuels has more.
It seemed like everyone turned out for Councilman Mitchell Farrell's Family Resource Fair, held recently on the campus of Rosemont Elementary School. The fair wasn't just informative and empowering...
We're having fun.
We have about 18 agencies and nonprofits partnering with us today, and we're offering dental screenings, medical screenings, we're offering immigration services, as well as pony rides for the kids, hot dogs, free food, bounce houses for the kids, but also city services.
Those city services range from sanitation in the public library to homeless services, the LAPD, and the fire department.
We like being in the neighborhood and letting constituents know that we are here for them, and that there are a lot of agencies and nonprofits that exist to serve the public.
This is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
Councilman O'Farrell has made outreach a top priority, leading close to two dozen community walks throughout his district since he took office. While aspiring drummers go head-to-head, celebrating African-American films and hiding your identity takes on a whole new look. All this and this week's things to do. The search for the top undiscovered drummer heats up during the Guitar Center's Drum-Off Finals. After making it through the preliminary rounds, the top five undiscovered drummers will hit the stage at Club Nokia to compete for the Drum-Off title. The Drum-Off competition was developed to inspire and support drummers in the pursuit of their musical aspirations. Drum-Off is committed to rewarding and recognizing talent by providing a launching pad for a professional career as a drummer. To compete, you need to sign up at a participating Guitar Center store. For more, visit drumoff.guitarcenter.com. The California African-American Museum celebrates African-American cinematic moments from the 1940s through an independent lens. Coloring Independently is an exhibition of more than 80 film stills and related photographs from the unique collection surrounding African-American films from the 1940s. The show features images of African-Americans in movies during a time of limited character roles and access to the mainstream movie industry. Seen typically in movies referred to as "race films" or "movies," these independent productions were created with a black cast and for an African-American audience. Explore the distinct images and stories told more than 65 years ago as part of the broader African-American filmmaking tradition. The exhibit is on view now through February 29th. The African-American Museum is located at 600 State Drive in Exposition Park. For more, visit caamuseum.org. It's a dynamic exhibition that considers the past, present, and future of disguise, a visual act that can be a mask, a costume, or simply a camouflage. Disguise features exciting new works by 12 contemporary artists from Africa and of African descent who explore the impulse of disguise with optical illusions, street actions, computer magic, and virtual reality. Together, these works will engage visitors' imaginations as they consider the art of masking as a transformative process, one that is informed by a multiplicity of influences, from historical African masquerade traditions to contemporary global culture and digital media. It's on view now until March 13th at UCLA's Fowler Museum. For more, visit fowler.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
I do want to welcome... Shh. To my right. I do want to welcome everyone to Los Angeles City Hall, your Los Angeles City Hall. It is Wednesday, January 13th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Busciano, Sodio, Engler, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Caress, Quarian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Sodio moves, Bon in seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. David Rue moves, and Nury Martinez seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, the Office of Finance recommends that items 2D and E be received and filed inasmuch as 2D has been paid in full and 2E has entered into an installment agreement. Further, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1A, B, D, G, H, I, Q, and S be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid in full, and that items 1T and 1I be continued to January 27.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Next?
Mr. President, items 1 through 22 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 1, 2, and 11.
Okay, let's hold those items. Members, we're dealing with items 1 through 22. Any specials? I do not see any, so let's proceed with our vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 23 through 34. They're items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 23 and 32 through 34 have been submitted and circulated. Lastly, item 25 should be held for an amending motion.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
Please hold 33 on the desk.
33 at the request of Mr. O'Farrell. Members? Okay, why don't we hold Mr. O'Farrell's item and the items you referenced, Mr. Clerk, and prepare to vote on the remaining items? Okay, Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, items 35 through 46 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 39, 42, 44, and 45.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That brings us where?
Item 47 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
Why don't we, for now, we'll hold it, and then I'll try to get some guidance from either the Chair or from our own city attorney. Okay, so we're now on what item?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item 48 is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
No, sir.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that.
Mr...
Mr. O'Farrell.
I also ask that we hold 48 on the desk.
40... So you want to hold 48?
Please.
Okay, so that... We will hold that at Mr. O'Farrell's request, so we're where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
At this point, I'd like to defer to Councilmember Rue. Mr. Rue, the floor... The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, fellow councilmembers. Korean-American leaders and fellow Angelinos.
Hold tight, Mr. Rue. Shh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, fellow councilmembers, Mr. President, Korean-American leaders, and fellow Angelinos. As the first Korean-American to serve on the Los Angeles City Council, I am honored to wish you all a happy, and as a councilmember, my first Korean-American day. On Jan... Thank you. On January 13, 1903, 56 men, 21 women, and 25 children began their voyage from Korea across the Pacific Ocean, arriving in Honolulu, Hawaii. From 1903 to 1905, another 7,500 hopeful Koreans traveled on the USS Gaelic to work on the Hawaiian sugared plantations to provide a better life for themselves and their family back home in Korea. The second wave of Korean immigration arrived in the 1950s after the conclusion of the Korean War. Nearly 100,000 military brides and approximately 300,000 Korean adoptees entered the United States. Then the third wave began in 1967 with hundreds and thousands of Korean immigrants under the 1965 Immigration Act. I am incredibly proud to say that my parents, along with thousands of others, were given the opportunities to provide a better life for their families, to achieve the American dream, and work towards a more prosperous future. You know, and it's been 113 years, and it's a pleasure to be here, and I just want to say one thing for the Korean-American community. We've been here for 113 years. I was the first Korean citizen here. It's not my fault. Our elders who came before me. We worked hard. That's why I came here. Our community was strong. We were the ones who came here. We were officially Korean citizens here officially. We're celebrating Korean American Day. It's so good to be here. My heart is beating. Now, there's a day of festivities as well as month-long events that we'll share with all the councilmembers, but I'd like to introduce some of the Korean-American leaders who helped organize Korean American Day, not just for today, but throughout this year. not just for today, but throughout several years, and making today very special. First, I want to recognize the Korean-American Foundation of USA for their work in establishing the Korean-American Day. And of course, there's also the Korean-American Foundation of Los Angeles, the chapter, the first chapter of the Korean-American Foundation. And also with us is the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles. And I'm going to ask the Korean-American leaders, first led by our ambassador and council general from Korea, Ambassador Hyung-Myeong Kim, to say a few words.
Welcome, sir, welcome.
안녕하십니까, good morning. I am very pleased to be here in the City Hall with the council members. And particularly, I'm very happy that the first Korean-American City Council member here is here. As he mentioned, Korean-Americans are working hard, and they are contributing to the betterment of the United States of America. And the Korean-American people, when it comes to relations between Korea and US, they are linchpin. And I can say here that relations between Korea and US is very strong and solid. And we have to work hard to that Korean-Americans' voices are being heard and represented. And I think this is, Mr. David Rue's entering this council is just the beginning. And we will work hard to make the United States a more prosperous and better country, a great country. And then I hope that Korean-Americans will continue to work hard to make our relations between Korea and US strong. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And next, I'd like to introduce the leader of the Korean-American Federation and the Korean-American community in Los Angeles, Mr. James Ahn.
Good morning, Mr. President, Herb Wesson, and honorable councilmembers. And thank you for joining us in the celebration of Korean-American Day. On this day, I'm proud to join all Korean-Americans throughout the United States, and in particular, those here in the city of Los Angeles. As we celebrate this important occasion, it is with great pleasure that I extend my best wishes to the entire Korean-American community. As we take a moment to reflect on our proud heritage, our community has grown to incredible new heights, and we continue to make positive and lasting contribution to this great city and to this great country. Also, this is the first time we celebrate Korean-American Day with our first Korean-American Councilman, David Rue, and for that, we are very proud. I want to thank you, President Wesson, for your great leadership, and to this entire council for your service and friendship with the Korean-American community. Together, we will do great things for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you again, and Happy Korean-American Day. Thank you.
Then, I'd like to introduce the President of the Korean-American Foundation of the Knights of the United States. Is it Mr. Tongsi Chong?
Yeah, it's LA, Los Angeles.
Oh, of Los An— I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, the Honorary President, Mr. Sangwon Park.
Thank you so much. Happy New Year, Happy Korean-American Day. Especially, thank you for Los Angeles Council Chairman, Mr. Herb Wesson. You made the Korean-American Day in the California House of Assembly. So now, all of the Los Angeles Council members support to the Korean-American community. Also, Korea and USA bond together, and they build up the better world and the peace and a safe and a security of the worldwide. Thank you so much, God bless you. Thank you.
And to close, we're going to have the President of the Korean-American Foundation, Los Angeles Chapter, Mr. Tongsi Chong.
Thank you, this morning. I cannot speak English very well. That's why I make this mic and then let me talk to Catherine Song.
It is my honor to be here today to celebrate Korean-American Day, and thank you, Mayor Garcetti, and the City Council members for recognizing January 13th as Korean-American Day. If it wasn't for the selfless sacrifice of Korean veterans and US support, we wouldn't be here today. Thank you, and Happy New Year. God bless you, and God bless America. Thank you.
And before I make the presentation, I just want to say, Korean-American Day is not just a celebration for the Korean-American community, but a celebration for us all. Because we're all a nation, we're all a nation of immigrants. And you make America. I make America. I am Los Angeles. We are Los Angeles. And together, all of us, make the mosaic and the fabric that makes us stronger and what makes America. So it's a pleasure to be here on Korean-American Day, share with my colleagues. And I thank everybody. And with that said, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present this Korean-American Day resolution to the leaders of the Korean-American community. Thank you.
Mr. Rue, before you leave, there are a couple of members that would want to say a few words. So I won't disturb the photo op. But I just want to say, and then I'm going to call on Mr. Weezer, that it is always a pleasure for me to see so many dear friends, President Ahn and Mr. Park, that I've known for many, many years. And that it has been, every day that I have been in elective office, I have represented at least a piece or a section of Koreatown, and it has always been an honor. The relationship that we have with the Korean people has been phenomenal. I tell everybody without pause that the Koreatown area, the mid-city area, when no one else in this city, no one else felt that they wanted to invest in that area, it was the Korean-American community, the Korean community, that invested. And now, it is one of the most prosperous areas within the city of Los Angeles. It has been an honor to work with you. And the relationship between the Americans and the Koreans, that's a relationship of blood, a relationship of blood and guts going all the way back to the war. We have always worked together. We have always been partners. I look forward to this day, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of the contributions. I will just say, Te dan hi, kamsamida. Mr. Weezer?
Mr. President, and Happy Korean-American Day. And it was great to see, Mr. Rue, as you spoke, how the rest of the community here was beaming with pride that one of their own was speaking from that podium as a councilmember for the second-largest city in this country. But it speaks volumes about what the city of Los Angeles is, as you mentioned, because this is the city of dreams. It's a place where people come from around the world to fulfill their dreams and provide a better family for themselves and for their families. And we often forget how great and how much diversity we have in this city. But congratulations, not only on this Korean-American Day, but congratulations to you, Mr. Rue. You're a great ambassador for your community, and congratulations for breaking another glass ceiling in this country that's given so much opportunity for people throughout the world. Congratulations to you all.
Mr. O'Farrell?
I also want to rise and just give our colleague, David Rue, a big congratulations as well for being the first Korean-American on the Los Angeles City Council. I know this day in particular has special meaning, being a Korean New Year. And so I want to salute all of you, the delegation. And you are indeed 100% accurate. It is the diversity that makes up the mosaic that makes Los Angeles the most special place in the world. And today's presentation is indicative of that value. And I just can't say enough of how proud I am to be an Angelino on days like this. So congratulations, and Happy New Year.
Mr. Rue, the floor is returned to you.
No, thank you. And yes, Lunar New Year is coming up, which all Asian cultures celebrate. And this is the year of the monkey. And in Korean, we say, "Seobok mani paduseo", which is Happy New Year. Thank you. And there will be a special dinner at the— at the Oxford Palace Hotel, which they wanted me to invite all the councilmembers. And we'll, it's at 6 o'clock at the Oxford Palace Hotel in Koreatown, extend invitations to all members. And if anyone would like to take some pictures with the Korean community, please come on out to the press room. Thank you.
Thank you all. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you for all you do. Mr. Park, Mr. Ahn, President Ahn? Yes. It's my understanding that we have some ordinances. Why don't we vote on reconsideration? Because we now have more than 12 members. So let's, which items will we be voting for reconsideration?
Those would be items 3 through 10 and 12 through 17, sir.
Okay, so we're, the first vote is on reconsideration. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Now we will actually vote on the items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we'll run through some items quickly. We'll start off with item 11, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, good morning, Council President Wesson. It is Eric Previn from CD2 in Studio City. And thank you for that very moving presentation this morning, sir. That was very well done. And I want to also say thank you to the Korean-American community for all that they have contributed to the city of Los Angeles. So this one is Riverside and Carpenter, sir, which is out in my district. And we talked about it in September, I think. I brought it to your attention that there would be a December 16th hearing, and then also a little public works meeting somewhere around there. And they were scanning to see if anybody cared. And regrettably, there were no ballots delivered by the final hearing date. So since no ballots were returned by the final hearing date in that proceeding, the no vote did not receive a majority. And as Mr. O'Connell will confirm, we're moving forward. So this is a tag on the residence for some lighting money. There are two in particular who are being tagged. One is the guy who owns a bunch of units. He's going to pass it on to his folks. I can't quite read his name because my vision is going, but it's Amron Ambar. And then Richard Harris Trust is the one guy who lives who's going to actually have to pay 138 bucks out of his own pocket. So this is the par for the course. And, you know, hopefully this brings some nice lights to the area. It's a little awkward that there were not a single protest. Holly Walcott, on December 24th, you know, did some kind of swearing under seal that she didn't get anything, so Merry Christmas. And now the residents will get a little uptick. So with that, you know, hope they're turning on the lights 24/7. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Murphy, Sean, we're going to do item 39.
Yes, item 39, I am supporting.
Thank you, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
We'll move on to item 45. Is Mr. Walsh here? Mr. Walsh, we're on item 45.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. We're on item 45 already. This is an exemption of one Assistant General Manager position for Personnel Department. Okay, let me tell you what this means. Because you have to find out what it means. It means that a friend of the mayor wants a job, and there's not enough, the, there's not enough money for him in the budget. There's not enough, the charter doesn't say how much, doesn't say the amount of money they want to give him. So they create an exemption and then give, I understand here, an extra $35,000. If I'm wrong, $35,000 for this person. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, don't go far. We're going to item 2. We have a card from you, and we have a card from Mr. Previn on item 2.
John Walsh, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is an item that should be, these are not very important items unless you yourself are, have the lien. Actually, as I said, you do a very good job compared to places, bandit places that are run by landlords like Glendale. You do a very good job. I haven't had any trouble with housing. They've done a very good job. Remember, when you do a good job as you do on liens, I am the first to praise you. And when you're crooked, I'm the first to condemn you.
Mr. Previn?
Yes, it's Eric Previn from CD2. And this is item, obviously, the Office of Finance reports about coming after the characters for unpaid taxes. Now, coming after characters for unpaid taxes is a city hallmark, as we've seen repeatedly. The problem is that there are certain characters who are not playing the transit occupancy taxes accordingly or the parking occupancy taxes. And what has happened is there's a little, there's a little logjam in the way we settle up with some of these characters. So the Office of Finance needs to do a very diligent job of being clear. Now, one very specific request was to see, you know, sometimes when we have somebody who's late on their payments, sir, we set up a payment plan for them, which is obviously appropriate. So for example, guy owes a million bucks. He pays only 5,000 or 10,000 a month for the first period, and then it goes up to, say, 30,000 a month. In some cases, it gets up there, and then nobody's really paying attention by then because it's been a year or two later. So this is where we need the diligence of the Office of Finance to be very, very thorough. And that's where a man named Craig Sykes, who's done a great job up there, hopefully will be providing the records that I've asked for soon. And here comes Professor Krikorian to attack me, perhaps. But nonetheless, I'm looking forward to clarity and transparency on this process because I think that everybody expects it. And we don't want some folks getting special deals, sir, while other people are getting the shaft, which we have seen from time to time. Not on a regular basis, but on a semi-regular to all-the-time basis. So yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we're going to move, Mr. Previn, don't go too far. We're going to move to item 42. And I believe that was— We're gonna move to Item 42, and I believe that was held special by you, Mr. Previn, and Mr. Walsh. Item 42. And I've been informed you have one minute, Mr. Previn.
Well, I left 30 seconds on the clock.
No, they, they just told me one minute.
Oh, they don't, they don't work with?
Mr. Previn State, you got one minute.
Sir, I am learning about this place a little bit more every day. Thank you. I'll do my best in this 42, Item Number 42. So this is, of course, can't see who made the motion because they're not advertising today, but it's to increase the reward from 1,000 to 2,000 for turning in a graffiti artist, I guess. So that's one way to curb graffiti, I guess, is to bring it up a grand. Are we getting a lot of traffic on this program? I mean, I don't know. To me, this is, is really an odd thing to be focusing on today, given all the problems we have, but so be it. One thing that is a bird, I mean, a sort of burr in my side, is the group that is constantly papering our Metro with plastic to prevent graffiti. And then even when it's not mired in trouble, they take it down and put up new stuff. So this contract should be looked at. I know that's not your purview, but the guys from Metro Bonin and Krikorian.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, increasing the reward? Well, these rewards are a joke. You know, 2,000 dollars for every instance of graffiti on Hollywood Boulevard, that'd be about $3 million. Now, none of the press is going to ask them how much they have given in rewards. David Zanheiser, all he has to do, all the mayor has to do is flirt with him, he's gay, and he doesn't ask any questions. Women reporters do not do, do that. But I'm telling you right now, how much graffiti have you awarded at 1,000, and do you expect 2,000? And I want the whole world to know, you can come to L.A., you can cover it with graffiti, and you won't get arrested, and you won't get harassed, you will get nothing. You will, you will, because it is not a priority. Why should graffiti be a priority when a reporter at the, at KTLA was attacked on Hollywood Boulevard live on camera? Live on camera! She could have been raped! Mary Beth!
This is not regarding this item.
Okay, you're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Walsh. Please contain your emotions. Okay, let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, well, now move to Item 44. Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, Item 44.
Yes, Item 44. It's another item I am supporting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to do a couple of public comment cards. I don't know if I'm gonna get to them all, but I want to start off with Michael Carrion, followed by you, Mr. Murphy. So Michael, come on.
Okay, once again, Mr. Weisar's tried to cover up his little thing on Soto by sending somebody out there to do a little cleanup and have his associate come and tell me that construction has started. Cleaning up a project is not construction. So Mr. Weisar's had 10 years to clean this up, and he says he needs an apple. So I say this to Mr. Weisar, either he leaves office, or we'll start a campaign to get him out of office. I know there's an opening in Mexico because they caught Chappelle Guzman. Maybe he can go apply for that job.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, good morning. Do not take Uber. It's not a good company. And I heard on KTLA5, another victim has been beaten. This time, it was a lady over on Hollywood Boulevard on New Year's Eve. If they're gonna beat people up, don't take them.
Okay, if I could have Mr. Hunt, followed by Mr. Walsh.
It's the Red Chief Hunt. Votehunt2016.com for U.S. Senate, folks. I gotta say, I gave you guys a second settlement proposal. You guys are in trouble. I'm a ninth-circuit winner. You guys can't file for limited liability, so get it done. It'll be the third time in U.S. District Court, unanimous victory. Read the proposal, get it done. Let's, let's do it. You can go to Fox News, and you can see me in the L.A. Times, November 10th. Arrested while being black in the police commission lobby. How about that one? Third time. I know how to do the paperwork. It will get done. Can't arrest somebody for being black. I've been arrested 72 times. Just think about it.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, congratulations! The Inglewood Rams are coming to town. Who left town? The Los Angeles Rams. You spent here millions of dollars on your farmer's field fiasco, and it didn't happen. Now, Inglewood is getting two teams. Nobody will criticize the mayor, because all the mayor has to do is cock tease the male reporters at the L.A. Times, and they fantasize having sex with him. I'm telling you right now, KTLA, Mary Beth McDade, be attacked! Live on KTLA the other night. Hollywood Boulevard, it's out of control. She could have been raped, Mary Beth McDade. She could have been, she, she could have had her throat slit. You don't give a damn. I'm telling the whole world, stay away from L.A., stay away from Hollywood Boulevard, or you'll get your throat slit on live television. Go check it out at HollywoodHighlands.org, all the information.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Krikorian. We have a couple of items that we wanted. You need a moment?
No, no.
So Mr. Krikorian, the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item 47 is a settlement of a case budget finances considered and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. That matter can be resolved in open session unless members have concerns or questions.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, don't you have to make an announcement?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
In the case entitled Dan Gregg et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $950,000 in settlement.
Okay, on this item, members, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, let's move now to Item 25.
And, Mr. President, amending motion 25A has been circulated.
Okay, so we've already satisfied public comment on this item. Let us then open the roll, Mr., let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is moved. Okay, we'll do Item 48.
And, Mr. President, amending motion 48A has been circulated.
Okay, so on this item, let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. We'll now go to Item 1. We have cards.
Mr. President, pardon me. Before doing so, there's been a request to continue Items 1C and 1F for two weeks. That brings us to January 27th.
And those items, again, that was 1?
1C and 1F, sir.
1F?
That is correct.
Okay, so I believe I have a card on 1F, but Mr. Lee, that item is being continued for how long, Mr. Clerk?
Two weeks, sir.
So that will be two weeks from today, would be January 27th. Okay, so I would like to call Joseph Karen Dayen, Karen Dayen, Karen Deen. And this is on, I think, 2, and Mr. Caretz.
I, I wanted to speak on Item 1M, if I might.
Okay, just, when I get to it, which will be the next item.
Okay.
Okay, let's, all right, so what we're gonna do now is go to your item, Mr. Caretz. That's 1M. I'd like to call for Charles. Do we have Charles? This is on 1M. Cali Balin or Bala? Please come forward, Item 1M. Mr. Charles, please come to the mic. Yes, sir.
Yes, you can go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm not so familiar with what's going on here.
Oh, no problem. Just go right ahead.
We have a synagogue. The address I provided over there, 17948, Ventura Boulevard. And we got fined because, you know, we did not comply with the city. And apparently, I just found out, I had, I had already paid. And the late pays, and, and the charges, I was not aware, and the landlord did not let me know. So that's why it was not paid. And the charge originally, I think, was $356, and they raised it to, after, after I paid this, you know, they raised it to 1776. And right now, we got the permit and everything we have. And I spoke to the inspector yesterday that in case they want to be in touch with them to find out that we cooperate with them or not, they said it's fine. I wanted to ask you, you know, since this place is nonprofit, you consider it not to pay the, the charges, please?
Thank you. So I'm gonna defer to Mr. Caretz at this moment. Mr. Caretz, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I understand that the, the late payment, which I believe has been made, was due to a lack of communication between the landlord and, and the synagogue. And so I'd like to ask that we waive the late fees on that.
On Item Number, Number 1M, yeah, this property is a synagogue. It's a religious institution, but it's not the institution, the religious institution that owns the property. So, and the property was inspected in 2013. They, they paid the initial fee, the non-comp fee, however, they didn't pay the late fee. And the department has been going after this property to pay the late fee. They failed up to today, but after talking with the council member, he feels that he wants to help them out by, by cutting of the late fee, and that will reduce the lien to $42, which the tenant, as I said, is willing to pay.
Okay, so, Mr. Caretz, you want to amend this, where we eliminate that fee?
Yes.
Okay, now, or is that, do we, is that the way we can do this, and I'd second it, or what have you?
Yeah, I think the council member wanted to eliminate the, the late fee of 1375, as well as the accumulated interest of $359.67. That will leave the remaining balance to be $42, which the, the tenant wants to pay. As soon as he pays that, that will close the case.
All right, that, that's fine. Now we're gonna go to, I have a Vladimir Stotor, Vladimir, and then is there an Anton? Anton Vladimir? Okay, so it's been recommended, Mr. Caretz, that we vote on 1M now. So, members, we're gonna vote on 1M right now. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that's approved as amended. Do we have a Helen, I think it's Ahazi? Please come forward.
Yes, I would like to ask for an extension so that I could get better understanding of what is going on.
And what, what address is that?
20501 Etna Street, Woodland Hills, California 91367.
So is Mr. Bloomingfield is not here today, but how long did you want that extension?
Two weeks.
Why don't we give you two weeks? That'll be to January 27th for you to, so you'll have that time to try to sort this out, okay? So on Item, what is it, 1P? We will continue that for two weeks. Thank you. So, Mr. Walsh now, Mr. Walsh.
This is as fast as I can walk when I'm 79. This is elder abuse from this man up here.
Now, stay on the subject, and you can always...
Come on, come on, Mr. Walsh, get your way!
You can always, no, 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 you're off the subject. Hold this time. Mr. Walsh, since you speak so much, we invite you to sit closer to the microphone. Now, with that said, start his time again.
Hearing protest, appeals, or objections to building safety. I'm, this is nuisance abatement. Again, you do a good job here despite yourselves. Anybody who comes up here and challenges it, you'll get a two-week delay. They never come back, which means they get a good deal and they're happy. So anybody who doesn't like the lien, come here, speak against it, and you'll get your two-week extension, and you won't come back because you will be satisfied. HollywoodHighlands.org, racist.
Thank you. Let, no, you're off the subject. That's what you are. Okay, let us prepare to vote on this item. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. Before doing so, there has been a request for 1K to be continued to February 12.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. President, we would ask Item 1R, as in radio, to be continued for two weeks.
Okay, so we'll continue that item to the 27th of January. Let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, I'm gonna shift back to general public comment. Ms. Autry, please come forward, followed by Mr. Akala. Ms. Autry, please come forward. This is general public comment, and you'll be followed by Mr. Wanakala.
Well, I'd like to speak regarding the regentrification and the, and the continued availability, not only of affordable housing, but of affordable dining. I've lived in apartment buildings owned by Isaac Schomoff, who has continually acquired apartment buildings and storefronts, and raising the prices so that affordable dining restaurants are now almost nonexistent downtown. When I moved downtown 13 years ago, there were more homeless people, but there were more affordable dining restaurants, cafes. Now, because of the gentry, upper-middle-class primarily influx or immigration, it's, you're catering to the rich. This is not an aristocracy. This is not an aristocracy. They're giving you money. I know that it's generating much revenue, but if you could maintain not only affordable housing, affordable dining, for those of us that are middle-class, lower-middle-class, still, you know, economically hoping for a greater positive cash flow.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Your time's expired, but thank you for coming down, Mr. Akala. Mr. Akala?
Do you know what Channel 11 calls this? Apartment Apocalypse. Do you know that makes you responsible, City Hall? You should have control over the greedy landlords that are trying to put everybody out on the street for the sake of money. You should control the corporations that are controlling everything so that people cannot survive. What the hell has elected you here to run a city that you can no longer control? What the hell is wrong with you? There's not even a parking spot around City Hall where a person can come, park, and come and speak their mind over here. How, why have you gone so damn crazy? I wear this!
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Akala. Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell? I, we're looking for one motion. I guess amendments? If I could check the status of... On item 33, and I do have a card. Mr. Akala? I have one more item and a card from you. It's item 33, so please come forward. Item 33.
Yeah. Item 33, um, intermingles with all the other items we're talking about. Obama gave a great speech, but he never mentioned...
What? Get on the subject.
What's he gonna do about homelessness? Uh, no president has been able to solve it. Uh, there are very easy solutions. We gotta stop being greedy and create a system where everybody can have a place to live without all this money, 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 money. Okay?
Thank you.
We gotta end it.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I believe... The item is currently being circulated. So, members, I ask you to bear with us. We're gonna, it'll take about a minute, and then we'll be in a position to vote on this item. Okay, it's been circulated. I see no one on the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Uh, Mr. Clerk, is there any further business or any other business before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred announcements? Okay, there are no announcements. Uh, I, what I'm gonna do is, uh, Mr. Previn, I'm told, I did not see a card on you, so I'm gonna let you come up and do your public comment. And is that Mr. Barajas? Okay, I'm gonna have you come up. You'll be right behind Mr. Previn. And did you submit a card, just for the record?
No, sir.
Would you do me a favor, and after you speak, do that? Give it to the sergeant.
There's no cards back there.
Okay, then, fine. Just, so, Mr. Previn, floor is yours. And then, Mr. Barajas. Mr. Previn, come on.
You need to be gentle with me, sir. You can't force me to go quickly after you took 30 seconds from me during the agenda items. No, I know, this is general public comment, so there's no interrupting. Let's be nice, okay? We got a lot to be thankful for in 2016, so thank you. My concern has to do with this Prop K stuff that I brought up earlier. Prop K is terrific, guys. This is money set aside by voters in 1996. But then, and so we got $3 million for our little park, but here's the problem. Now, there's $7 million coming from somewhere, but our representative has not really made it clear, and yet, the people in his district office are making it seem like it's already a done deal. We're moving forward with a big, giant parking structure on your park. No, sir. So, that's why I'm raising it up into general public comment, where nobody pays attention, but where everybody is listening. And, sir, I think we can do better, and I think that the outreach department, and maybe Mr. Weezer could work on, an outreach that goes citywide, not leave it to the per county or city district, but leave it to a protocol that makes everybody aware, because stuff happens in Studio City, and then you find out about it, as opposed to stuff is going to happen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Barajas? Brian, the floor is yours.
Well, I turned in a leaflet, British set, British step-up bail-in genocide as markets crumble. Um, I think a presidential statement, uh, from Lyndon LaRouche will be made this Thursday, if not sooner, but people should log on to LaRouche PAC immediately for all of the future-oriented measures that we're taking up. Uh, one of our measures that we're looking into is we have to join the New Silk Road land bridge, um, worldwide. We have a future. Obviously, the statements made by a President of the United States, who deserves nothing less than files of impeachment, articles of, uh, to rescind his engagement as President of the United States. We are mobilizing to save the world, and anyone who wants to join me in that are more than welcome to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barajas. That, uh, closes general public comment. Uh, before we move to adjourn, Mr. City Attorney? It's my understanding... That being circulated now is a motion that we'll need for you to make findings on. So I defer to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll wait till it's fully distributed.
It is fully distributed, man.
Okay, fully, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. I will cite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Late last week, during the council recess, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers declared a state of emergency in relation to proactively safeguarding access along the LA River during El Nino. The Corps is requesting immediate rights of access and entry to city facilities abutting the LA River to adequately safeguard those areas during this El Nino rainy season. Immediate action is required to coordinate with city departments to allow such access for the safety of the community before the next rainfall. Due to the council recess, council could not introduce any motions last week for council action this week. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. All right, Mr. Walsh, come on. Okay, we'll vote on the findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Go ahead.
John Walsh, again, praise. We have socialist water and power here, DWP. We don't have any of this crap happening here. We have it happening at SoCal, where you're poisoning white and Asian people who took two weeks...
No, you're not, Mr. City Attorney, I don't... No, you're not, no, you're not on topic, Mr. Walsh. Stay on topic.
He's heckling me.
No, I'm not. I'm telling you to stay on topic.
Look at him, he's heckling me, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Stay on top. No, no. Mr. Walsh, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, his time is done. Mr. Walsh, you're now disturbing the meeting, which you do on a regular basis, but I want that noted for the record. All right, uh... Okay, so, Mr. O'Farrell, did you wanna say a word? Okay, then, let's vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. Forthwith, that brings us where? Mr. Clerk? Announcements again?
Yes, sir.
I see no announcements. Would everyone please rise for, oh, Mr. Buscaino, you have an announcement or adjourn? Everybody, please, in the council chambers, please rise for adjourned motions. We will start off with Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we rise and adjourn in memory of Georgia Simeoni. Born on September 23rd, 1934, in Croatia, immigrated here in San Pedro with her family, where she lived the rest of her life. She passed away, um, in San Pedro last month, December 15th, in 1965. She married the love of her life, Jean, who was also, um, the boy next door, as she called him. Uh, they spent 50 years together and raised a family, enjoyed gardening, cooking, card games, and friends, and singing in the Mary Star of the Sea Croatian choir, volunteering for the Veliki Gospi Society, and, um, she was a very generous and loving. She's preceded in death by her parents, Marja and Marian, and survived by her loving husband, Jean. Her daughters Gina and Kathy, Sister Catherine, and her six grandchildren, numerous nieces, nephews, and lifelong friends. Funeral mass was held in Mary Star of the Sea Catholic Church on December 22nd. May Georgia Simeoni rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, I'm still looking at my left side. Any other adjourned motions? That would be on Mr. Bannon's side. Uh, now, go to my right, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Sister Rachel Diaz-Sandoval. We had a very unfortunate accident, uh, over the last month, where Sister Rachel Diaz-Sandoval was crossing the street from her parish to the local elementary school where she helped administer the school. Um, she was a dedicated servant in the community, a dedicated servant to God, and our office got numerous calls about how they remember her in one way or another, whether how she was a teacher to them, helped them, and guided their family through some of their hardest times, and a real, um, uh, someone that people could rely upon in the community. Uh, the community poured out, um, a few weeks ago to her funeral, uh, and it was great to see just a number of people sharing stories about how this one person, quiet person in public, but how this one small, quiet person made a tremendous impact in so many people's lives. Uh, she was born and raised in Mexico City, where she was raised in a religious household. She was always religious, but in 1969, she made the decision to lead a religious life as a nun. She, uh, she was educated in multiple fields within the Catholic Church, including church administration, confessions, and primary education, among many others. Uh, she was a great woman, simple, loyal to her faith, hardworking, reliable, helpful, funny, humble, and the best teacher of Catholic education. She aimed to protect and prepare any child who she taught religion to. Sister Rachel is described by friends of the church as a pillar in their community, as they saw her as a vital part of the church. They remember her as a small woman in size, but with a big heart full of love, dedication, and faith. Condolences to her family and friends, and to the close-knit community at Assumption Church and School. Uh, she definitely will be missed in the community and be missed by all of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Coretts?
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Merv Evans, who some of you here will know. I met him in the...
Merv Evans, the...
Who worked with David Gould for many years. Um, he died a few days ago. Um, he had a bout with cancer. I met him in 1972 during the McGovern campaign, when I also met David Gould. Uh, those of you who would know Merv, uh, would either know him if you were a client of David's, because we all work with him, um, or if you knew him as a candidate. Uh, he was a very smart political strategist, as long as it had nothing to do with his own campaign races. He was notorious for running in one race after another, where he couldn't possibly win, and took on the, the most obvious, difficult incumbents to run against for no particular reason. Uh, actually, some of them appeared at his funeral with certificates, uh, so they didn't take that too negatively. Um, Merv was always kind of a character. He was also, uh, someone people said was born anxious. Uh, he hated procrastination. He liked to get things done, and he was actually born in a taxi cab on the way to the hospital. So, symbolically, uh, he started that way. Um, as I said, he ran against just about every candidate that one could imagine. Uh, and, uh, but he always enjoyed the effort. Very optimistic guy. Also was a noted author, wrote a number of books and DVDs, um, including 10 Steps to a Perfect Business Plan. Uh, he is survived by his lifelong companion, Lynette Agnes Bigelow, her two lovely children, Melinda and Keith Wilson, that he nurtured as his own. He leaves one sister, Jacqueline Pierceall, a brother, Larry Pierceall, an aunt, Doris Evans, a niece, Doris Clark, five nephews, a host of cousins, great nieces and nephews, many of whom expressed a lot of love at his funeral. Um, he leaves behind also his dearest friends from the high school debate team, where he learned how to speak. Uh, David Gould and Dennis Conrad, uh, his friends from LA High, and he will be missed by all who knew him.
You know, Mr. Coretts, I had no idea that Merv was even sick. Uh, many of us have known Merv for 30 years, 20-plus years. And for you members that don't remember him, he was the colorful gentleman that would come here with the safari hat, and it would be propped up on one side and, uh, compliment me on a regular basis. He was a character. And, and, uh, but as you begin pulling back the, the layers of his onion, you find out that he was just so, so very skilled. So, Mr. Coretts, I would love to be able to sign that adjourned motion, uh, with you. He was a class act where related to individuals that would come and give public comment, and, uh, he could really turn a phrase. Mr. Price?
My name to that as well. I knew Merv. Uh, he ran against me several times, and, uh, just always appreciated his spirit of civic engagement, and being honored to sign it. Thank you.
Okay, any other adjourned motions? No more adjourned motions. Mr. Englander, I understand, before we actually adjourn, that you have, uh, an emergency,
No, just a motion. Yeah, we're trying to get in today. I think, I believe the clerk is circulating it, uh, now. The right answer is, it doesn't matter. When did that stop us?
Been circulated, it's been signed. Uh, members, uh, this, this meeting is adjourned. See you Friday.
You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.
And my station, what we usually do is help West Side Pavilion as security, and we just walk around and help out the security as, in anything, in any way that we can. I'm currently from Van Nuys Police Station, and we assist, uh, a lot of community events. We do color...